It's called to order. Madam Clerk.
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey, adequate notice of the work session, regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made as required, indicating that this work session, regular meeting, will take place at the municipal building at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, April 23, 2024.
Thank you. If we could all stand for the pledge allegiance, followed by the invocation from Councilmember Potaznick, Deputy Mayor Potaznick. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Let us take the next few moments of silence to each seek our own way. Whatever sources of inspiration will grant us strength and power in our thoughts and our decisions to be for the benefit of all people at all times. And may we find peace in the Middle East for our brothers and sisters that are suffering there and peace for the Ukrainian people. Amen.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Embarrassing.
Here.
Councilwoman Ferswa. Councilwoman Karazi. Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilwoman Ojaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potaznick.
President.
Councilwoman Uden.
Here.
Councilman Vasanella.
Here.
And Councilman Wright.
Thank you. Councilman Wright, you had a... No amendment to the agenda. We have commendations and proclamations. The 2024 Arbor Day proclamation by Councilman Vasanella.
And Shade Tree Chairman Extraordinaire. Okay. All right. It's that time of year again. I'm sure many of you know or have heard about Arbor Day, but I'll read this proclamation and we'll all learn a little bit more about it. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, where the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees. And whereas National Arbor Day is celebrated annually in April by communities nationwide as a time to promote the benefits of trees, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate temperatures, clean the air, sequester carbon, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our township increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the Township of Franklin has recognized the value of trees by creating a Shade Tree Commission to promote tree conservation and planting and maintaining trees on public property throughout the township. And whereas in a 2016 proclamation, the Township of Franklin adopted a Tree Canopy Cover Goal of 42% to preserve and increase its valuable tree canopy. And whereas the Township of Franklin has been a proud Tree City, USA for 22 years. And whereas the Shade Tree Commission, in partnership with the Franklin Township Board of Education, will host an Arbor Day event on Friday, April 26, 2024, at the Township gazebo right outside our municipal building. Now therefore, we, James Vasanella Councilman and Philip Kramer, Mayor, on behalf of the entire Franklin Township Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26, this Friday, 2024 as Arbor Day 2020... It says 2023 in the proclamation. As Arbor Day 2024 in the Township of Franklin, Somerset County. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands for this and future generations. So, sorry it was so long, but hopefully informative and interesting. We take for granted trees, I think, a lot. We all do. It gets me in annoyance when the leaves are falling or there's a branch that has to be cut and you can't reach it with your pole saw. But overall, if one, if half of the things in here, they talked about trees, boy, that is, it sounds like the magic bullet to everything, the magic pill to make everything better. Obviously, the environment, everything from property values to just generally how people feel and the positive health benefits. But I'm not going to go on and on. I do want to introduce Steve Goholey, one of the hardest working chairpersons of any committee we have in Franklin Township. Arnie Schmidt, he's a little more bashful, he's in the back. He's also been an incredible asset and contributor to the Shade Tree Commission. And many of the people in the audience here, I recognize, that are involved in conservation efforts. So I'm going to turn it over to Steve. But please, if you can't come out Friday for the event we're doing, just in general, try to celebrate. And maybe, Steve, we'll give you a couple more ways you could do that. But I wanted to give this to our Chairman, Steve Goholey. Thank you, Mr. Vasanella. Yes, and I'll just, I'll keep this very brief for the audience. Arbor Day, as you know, is the day we focus on planting trees, but our Shade Tree Commission, along with the Environmental Commission and the Open Space Committee, works all year long to add trees to Franklin Township. I'm very happy to say, last year, now that we got through COVID, we're back to planting trees. Last year, we added over 70 new trees to public land in Franklin Township. This year, we're already scheduled to plant over 150 trees on Hamilton Street, and that's just the beginning of the year. So we're going to keep adding trees to Franklin, keeping the trees that we have, keep adding more as we go. And you can participate in that this week if you go to our Township Shade Tree Commission website. We are selling trees, bare root trees, for distribution this weekend that you can plant. We don't have a very large number of them, but they are available for you to purchase. Great for this area of the country, not very expensive, hard to find at nurseries. So we tried to get a good selection for the township. And this Friday, 3 o'clock, we'll read the proclamation at the gazebo. All are invited to come by for that exciting event. And this weekend, we'll be distributing trees over at the convenience center. So you're welcome to stop by and go online, order a tree, come by and pick it up this weekend. And if you're interested, we have two openings on the Shade Tree Commission. So if you like the environment in our town and want to help us do more with it, please join. And that's it. Thank you. Again, please find a way to celebrate Arbor Day. Obviously, we just, Earth Day, another environmental holiday, that there are little things you could do to promote trees, the environment and conservation in general. Thank you.
And now for the Franklin Township Compressor Station Task Force commendations.
Dr. Chase. So, good evening. My name is Ed Potaznick. I'm the pleasure of being Deputy Mayor here in Franklin Township. And first want to start off by just saying Happy Earth Day. That was just yesterday. And I think this makes Earth Month or Earth Week. You see lots of activity, the Shade Tree Commission and Arbor Day. But what we're here to do today is celebrate the efforts of a group of outstanding volunteers, some of which were able to make it tonight, and others of which are watching from home, maybe continuing to do their work. But it really is about seven years of advocacy. People have been, you know, thanking me for my work, but I think tonight is really about thanking all of you, the people who are here who made it happen. But if you hadn't heard, if you hadn't read about it in the newspaper, the Williams Transco Company has pulled the plug on the Northeast Supply Enhancement Project, which we refer to as NESI, which would have put a compressor station 206 in Franklin Township over on Route 27, would have been closer to my house than the nearest grocery store, and it would have been right next to the Higginses. And not only is it the wrong move for us for our clean energy goals and the public health, but it's also, would have had a detrimental impact quite significantly for the township. And so, a lot of things happened to make this project go away and protect our children and our grandchildren, protect our elderly populations and vulnerable populations from the air pollution. There was a lot of fundraising. There was a lot of public education. You know, when we first started, I remember Patty and I, we did an event, you know, with Linda, and folks didn't really know what it was. What does that mean? What is a compressor station? What does that mean to compress it? Why are they compressing it? Is there more pressure? What are the dangers? The mayor found an article in Franklin Township where a pipeline had exploded. I don't know how many years ago it was, like 80-something years ago previously. Luckily, it was in a field. But the dangers from that kind of thing are also real. We also work to educate elected officials, to engage folks, to testify, to write letters. There was intervening, and then when they would file again, there was re-intervening and intervening again, and not screwing it up because each time the pool got smaller. A lot of the press nationally were reaching out and saying, how are so many people intervening? It's so hard. How'd you get hundreds of people? Well, when you have a community as densely populated as Franklin Township, and you want to put two 32,000 horsepower, natural gas-fired engines constantly spewing pollution into the air, a lot of folks take notice. But because of the efforts of the folks that are here today, researching, rallying, and so much more. It's important for us to stay vigilant before I read this and present it to folks. And just, you know, if anyone particularly is feeling like they want to share anything burning quickly, we'll open the microphone as well. Some folks, so Linda says we didn't do any fundraising, but the truth is, there was money. The Township did dedicate some funds, as well as folks in different homeowners' associations. So it wasn't fundraising like bake sales, but there was some investment. So, the commendation reads, and I know the mayor's here too, thank you for your leadership. Whereas "It is our sincere gratitude and admiration for the outstanding service displayed by the Gas Compressor Station Opposition Ad-Hoc Committee for protecting our community from the dangerous and unneeded Williams Transco Northeast Supply Enhancement Project." And whereas "The April 10, 2024 email from the Williams Transco informing FERC," which is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, "that they would not seek an extension marks a significant milestone in the collective effort spanning over seven years by the Gas Compressor Station Opposition Ad-Hoc Committee." And whereas "Throughout this time, their unwavering dedication to advocacy, fundraising, public education, engagement with the public, testifying, letter-writing, intervening, researching, and rallying has been truly commendable. And whereas the benefits of their tireless work are immeasurable, and by preventing the construction of the NESI project, our community will enjoy cleaner air, protection of our public health, and the elimination of safety risks. And whereas these efforts ensure our children and grandchildren will inherit a healthier environment, free from the potential harms posed by this unnecessary project." Now, therefore, we, Ed Potaznick Deputy Mayor and Phil Kramer, Mayor, on behalf of the entire council, with deep appreciation and gratitude, extend our thanks to the individuals here for your commitment to protecting our community and making it a shining example of the power of collective action and grassroots advocacy. Without your dedication, this victory would not have been possible. So let's give it up, a round of applause for these folks. I'm going to say the names of the folks that are here, and then again, if anyone wants to share anything briefly. Linda Powell, who was a very mighty force in keeping us on task each step of the way. Patty Kronheim, who came all the way down from Monmouth County to be with us once again. We appreciate her efforts. Julie Higgins and her husband, thank you guys for, most recently, one of the reasons they kind of withdrew was because they have to have continuous operations, and they weren't doing their part to actually do anything on the project. They were going to sit on the permit and with, together with New York, put a lot of pressure on them. And you were monitoring it closely because they had an access, well, they didn't have full, anyway. Thank you for monitoring that closely. Calhoun, for your leadership. Bernadette Maher, appreciate it. Arnie Schmidt, this way. Princeton Highlands Community. You guys want to take it? You're, no? Oh, you're not with, okay, never mind. I thought, maybe. I invited some folks. Dr. Ted Chase, former council member, also super active and great with the research and analysis. Our, into the elected officials and other category, if I missed anyone, we'll get them. Mr. Bob Vornlocker. A lot of folks have mentioned his stalwart leadership. I think that, you know, forming the ad hoc committee, but also ensuring that the township was appropriately engaging, that takes effort and commitment, and we appreciate that. Assemblyman Joe Danielson, thank you for coming, for your efforts, our hometown, Assemblyman. Folks that couldn't make it tonight, Kirk Frost, obviously folks from Princeton Highlands. Barbara Cuthbert, I have other ones on the desk over there, and Teresa Ford. We appreciate all of you, and if you want to share any thoughts, I'll start with the mayor and then see if anyone else has anything to share. Congratulations and thanks.
Very, very quickly, I never thought it was going to work. I, I'm going to admit it, I never thought we would be successful, but I did know that it was worth the fight. And Linda always had faith, and the rest of you always had faith, so we kept up the fight. So thank you for that. Thank you for keeping me pointed in the right direction.
Yeah, I'd like to say something. First of all, I want to thank Patty, who is my pipeline guru. She, I think, bit her eye teeth on working against the PennEast Pipeline, which is another pipeline that did not go through New Jersey. And two of our researchers and our main writer, Barbara Cuthbert and Kirk Frost couldn't be here tonight. So of course, they were definitely, I think Barbara was the one who was constantly in contact with our town manager, Bob Vornlocker, I think because he got tired of hearing from me.
Not true.
And Ed Potaznick, who was not Deputy Mayor at the time, helped us from the beginning, as did Assemblyman Joe Danielson, who was very concerned, being a firefighter, concerned about the issue of fire with an explosion, since that was in a dynamite blasting zone. The proposed compressor station was in the dynamite blasting zone in an area with low water pressure. So, you know, everyone was really on board with this, and we hope we don't have to do this again, but if we do, we will.
Hi, my name's Patty Kronheim, and this wasn't my first pipeline fight, but I wanted to say that working with all of you, I always said that fighting a pipeline is like getting a master's degree in fighting fossil fuels. And coming into your community and, you know, working with all of you, I was just so honored. It was such an honor because I have never worked with a group of people who have been so dedicated, so stalwart through the, all the turns and the obstacles and all the impediments and things that happen when you fight a pipeline. You all just were steady. You had the support of your township, so kudos. And I just want to say it was a total honor working with all of you. You all passed a master's class with flying colors and go off and got your PhDs. And I know many of you now do environmental work in the greater community, because that's what happens when you start fighting these things. And the world is a better place. Anything good came out of this. It's because of all of you, and now you're light shining out in the world, helping fight fossil fuels in the state of New Jersey and beyond. Thanks.
Hello, Franklin. Linda, 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 you are a one-woman army, the warrior of all warriors. But like the mayor, I too, thought we were going to lose. But I love a good fight, and this was a good fight. And I like fights that we win even better than just good fights. And this fight, we won. And in great part, to you and all your partner warriors that are behind us, and even those that are not here, the community, you brought everyone together on every level. I, you know, I had Assembly Resolution, AR 32, and that was presented in the Assembly. And proudly, I could say, and for the first time in 10 years in the legislature, I get to withdraw one of my own bills. I've never done that before, because it's no longer in consideration because we won. So maybe we should have a bill withdrawal party, and we could then tear it up in celebration. But good for us. We are now safer, we are now healthier, and because we're Franklin, we are better. God bless everybody.
I just want to say that South Brunswick had a group that worked with us, you know, basically all local people and people from around the state, grassroots and environmental groups, and New York, because New York was also engaged in this fight. So we really did have a massive coalition of people working. And that's why I always like to call it the proposed compressor station, to not make it a reality.
So the next item is public portion, but before we do that, we have a very special guest in the audience today. And we have a very special guest in the audience today. Councilwoman Uden's daughter is here. And do you want to introduce her?
Though we'd love to. We're trying to keep her, Mayor, not scare her away. So Samaya Udine is here. Samaya, do you want to stand up really quick and just say hi to everyone? She's my intern in training. Thank you.
That'll teach ya.
Just seeing that we all have parents.
Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried, we are open to the public. Five minutes each, one only may come up once, no yielding of time. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Inman, and I live on Roberts Road, 67 Roberts Road. And I am here this evening just to find clarity on the Right to Farm Act, as it applies to Franklin Township in a residential neighborhood. There is a residence on Phillips Road that has a rooster. I've gone to the zoning department. I spoke with Mr. Gregory and informed him that there was a rooster, and it crows at the crack of dawn and then all day long. I hear it as I'm working from home. So someone can give me clarity about the Farm Act and the zoning, as it relates to the zoning for farm animals.
So we just take the comments now, and at the end, we'll respond. So if that's all you have?
Okay, no, I have one more.
Okay.
There is a food truck parked on the corner of Ralph Street and Roberts Road. It's an obstruction. When cars are coming down Ralph Street, and if cars are coming out of Roberts Road at the fork in the road, and there is no stop sign, it's an obstruction. It's an obstruction for the school buses, and it's obstruction for traffic. So who handles that?
That's a quick one. You should contact the police department.
Hi. My name's Loretta Evans. I live at 60 Roberts Road, and I live on that corner where the food truck that was previously mentioned is parked. And I'd just like to state that I have called traffic, they have ticketed it, towed it, they got it back a couple months later, parked it in their driveway because they had plenty of space to park it in their driveway. And now it is back on the corner, being an obstruction to the traffic, as she stated. I have two children that ride a school bus. It is a hazard in the morning for the school bus. So I would like to ask, how do we just keep contacting the police over and over and over again? And I would also like to second on the rooster incident. So if you could just, that'd be great. And then how do we get the police to have someone with a decibel reader over the weekends when people are playing music too loud? We've, no, they don't come during, they said, when we call, they state that they work Monday through, like, they don't come out on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
We'll answer at the end. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maitreya Patel. I'm at 29 Julie Court in Somerset, in the housing community called Hampton Ridge. And this is a community, some of you are aware, which is in the back of Westminster Road. The only way to access the community is through the apartments, Somerset Park, and then the townhomes, Somerset Glen. In the recent past few weeks, there is a section of the community between the townhomes and our housing community, there's an easement there, which doesn't have a sidewalk, no streetlights, no parking spots. But we've seen the overflow of vehicles from the townhomes or whoever it is, parking in that little section, all the way up to the corner. And not only cars, but it includes tractor trailers, motor transport vehicles with cars loaded on top of it, commercial towing trucks.
Are you talking about on Westminster?
Yes. Westminster towards the end before the Julie Court and Debra Drive begin.
And that's my, yes.
So it's a section where school buses stop in the morning at the corner, but there are all these cars and trucks and tow trucks getting parked in that section, which doesn't have a sidewalk, street lighting, or any, any sign whatsoever.
Again, we'll answer at the end.
Sure. And I was late in sending a presentation. I did email some pictures for your reference, which you can review later. The other thing we have on that same presentation is there was a chain put up between the next community over, Somerset Muse.
Yandik Mindy?
Yes. Which, which has worked well, but lately, last couple of months, that keeps coming off. I don't know how they're removing it, or I saw kids jumping up and down on it, removing it. So, I'm sorry? Is it you or Ari? No, I'm sorry, Ari Drive.
Ari Drive.
Mindy is the other, Ari Drive.
I know where the chain is.
Yes. Ari Drive to Julie Court.
We have two. Oh, Ari, oh, not the one, Mindy, Ari Drive, okay.
Mindy, that's the other, from the townhomes to the, yes.
No, okay, I know where that one is too.
Okay, yes. So this one is into our housing community between Ari and Julie. There are two chains. So if we can see if there's any way to better secure that. And then I'll bring Sheila, my neighbor, next.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sheila Phillips Murph, and I live at 4 Debra Drive, where I've lived for the last 24 years. I am very familiar with our township. I happen to like it very much. I've actually lived here 34 years. I'm coming to you today because I am very extremely concerned about the cars and the trucks, and they're so high that when you, I leave in the morning because I'm in the education field, and the kids are standing there at the bus stop, but you can't see them, because they're tractor trailers, they're trailers with cars parked on the tractor, up to six, seven vehicles, in addition to additional cars. My feeling is, when the easement between Debra Drive and Victoria was built or created, my thinking is, it wasn't created for parking space, because there's no lights, there are no streetlights, there's no sidewalk. So in the summer, in our community, we get a lot of people who are walking in the streets because there's no sidewalk. My thinking is, with the new management at Somerset Glen, if it's their intention to create this easement area for parking space, then they need to do the right thing. Keep us safe, keep our children safe, keep my grandchildren safe, and install street lighting, a sidewalk. lighting, a sidewalk, and the proper identification for parking, which they probably would not get, more than four cars parked there. So why incur the cost? That's basically it for me. Thank you.
Gov. Sashadri from 17 Julie Court, the same development. I'm just adding to the same points. It's a big problem, people illegally parking in that corner. And in the night, it gets, gets worse because we cannot see who's coming from the other side, I suppose. So I would like the council to take action on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a cherry on Georgetown Road. Just was good to hear all that about Arbor Day and the value of trees. And I want to particularly recommend, as I have before, the planting of more trees in that part of the township east of Franklin Boulevard, and also what's just west of Franklin Boulevard and south of Hamilton Street, because those are the areas with the lowest tree canopy in the township. And increasing the tree canopy will lower the ambient temperature in that area. And it's really something we can do for that area. It's good to hear that the tree planting is going ahead on Hamilton Street, but I ask you to then go ahead with more tree planting in the general area east of Franklin Boulevard. I sent a list of places where one could conveniently plant trees in the township right of way to achieve this result. And I, I hope that the plan for tree maintenance is moving ahead and will soon be complete and supportive of new tree planting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else?
Debbie Stewart to Farrington. Congratulations to the Compressor Station Task Force. Great job. I know it's been a long haul for you, and I'm sure a very difficult task, and we all appreciate everything you've done. And also Arbor Day, love all that stuff with the trees, so important for us all. Quick question. I woke up one morning and saw that there was a sidewalk going in on Schoolhouse Road, all the way down. That was surprising. If you could tell me a little bit about who, what, when, where, how is that funded? It's probably through the developers. Some of it is blacktop, some of it is cement. I mean, I think it's great. We need more ways to get to the shopping centers. That being said, the little shopping center that doesn't have much going on there, I know you have a business development team, if they can try to get in. From Canal Walk folks, I hear a restaurant, a restaurant. And I always think of Confectionally Yours, which I think is the greatest little place we have in town. Something where people could go with their friends to have some lunch, breakfast, bring their grandkids into the shopping center there, walk down, take their bikes, whatever. Now, and also, is that, I know it's a sidewalk, but there really is no safe way to ride a bike down Schoolhouse Road. So I'm wondering if that's a multipurpose sidewalk. Also, then getting back to Mettler's Road, is there any way to put in some safe biking, walking path from the Colonial Park down then towards Schoolhouse? Just to make everything nice and flowing, I know that's part of your task that you're trying to accomplish in the town, have people have a way to get around, even if it's not an impervious surface, but something maybe like the canal path, soft chips or gravel to make it safer. I saw a family the other day coming, they must have been coming from the park, tuteling down Mettler's Road like they were in a lovely little safe environment, and that is anything but safe on Mettler's Road. First of all, as I've mentioned, the speed limit is too fast on Mettler's Road around Colonial Park. And they were totally oblivious in it. I just said, oh, my gosh, they have no idea what they're encountering. And as I went around a bend, here comes a pickup truck flying in the other direction. I just said a prayer for them, hoping obviously nothing happened. But it's a frightening, so if that could be more user-friendly, that section there, and yeah, that's it. But anyway, love the sidewalk, and thank you.
Anyone else?
No, Bob, you know, you got, you got your mission going on on me, man. You know, you win, you win. Let me first say this, you win. You win, all right? Now, give me a break, let me live, please.
Name and address, Johnny.
You don't know me, ma'am? Johnny, 25 Parkside.
Excellent.
I knew y'all sitting there. First of all, let me commend Linda Powell and her gang. She knew she had her gang, my gang behind her all the time, so just in case y'all want to go the other way, let me tell you, you know. Congratulations, and God bless. Now, you know, I got a hundred things. I'm destitute, I ain't got no job. Y'all are bobbing and got me from calling. You know, ma'am, you know, you know, y'all got me, all right? But I'm still here in Parkside. I'm gonna be here forever, till I live and die, I'm gonna be here in Parkside. I need your help to do what I'm supposed to be doing. You win. Your mission's over now. I told you, you win. All right, first of all. Bob, where's my garden, man? They got my phone cut off. You know, you guys in the IT department, you know, I'm, got my phone, sir, by the way. Did let some of them come through, the other one didn't let them come through. And that's what Joe was just talking about. He gave me important messages. They cut my phone off, then they cut it back on, they let me some message, they don't, and I know it's them because I heard them talking with each other. They messed around and said the wrong name, and I heard their name. And I found out this, you are the IT department. All right. I, Ted here? Yeah, Ted, I'm getting to you, Ted.
Who's addressed, Councilman, Mr. Tibbs?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Oh, okay. Oh, hello. Yes, I need the Public Works to please put my plots in, so could they want to get the garden started? I got a couple guys to help me, and I'm volunteering, I'm going on with that. I understand Mrs. Figueroa, you got a grant, you give a grant, Harold Grant for Pine Grove Park, well, she was saying something like that. And Mr. Daly, the council, your county man, Mr. Daly, his first name? Daly, his last name's Daly. Our county commissioner, which Chanel, then? Anyway, he called and told me he wanted to become a part of too, the community garden project, sustainable garden, and he wanted to put one in Colonial Park. That's, all right, so I had to go to you, Bob, you know, all right? All right. Please let me get started. And people drive me, what seems to drive me crazy. Okay. The bump walk, the kid, they're still flying up and down Mark Street, 100 miles now, and I hope one of my little kids don't get hit. This is the third time, I'm telling you now, okay? Now, we need them bad. On top of that, in the, in the park, Bob, they got two water pipe, drainage pipes that says, open up, you know about that? That, used to see it, man. One little girl, a Spanish girl, they was out there playing, and she was playing around right before the park. I mean, see the hole, and see the ground? That's how deep it is. In the middle of the park. Okay? So you know about that? All right, all right, that's the other one off my mind. All right, you know about that one? My garden? And, oh, by the way, I want everybody here to know that any money that came down to Franklin Township, to your, your youth center, that was money that I've been begging for and fighting for, for the past five, six, seven years. Finally, I've been telling everybody, apply for that money. They know about, Bonnie, Watson, come, they all know, but they turned the money down here, and it went to you. It's supposed to went to SCAP, to my manpower program, so I can train all the young men in town. I'm gonna save, try to save all young black men and put them in service. I'm a veteran, by the way, and I'm proud of it. But all the money, Money Valley got, that your simple tender got, that's some of my money. And the rest of the money that Kimberly and SCAP got, you guys on the board, developed their manpower training program, which I was director of it for years and years and years. So we, the guys on the board, they ain't about nothing, you know, and they don't know about how to pursue your own money. I don't, you know, that's money that, well, it come down to me, to us and the community. That's why I called Somerset Community Action Program. The Somerset community was fighting for that money. It's not no Somerset County Action Program. You got Northwest County, my buddy up there, they take care of the county in terms of manhood and all that other stuff. All right? Please do that. Now, if you know, anytime you know, you got a 14 and 13-year-old kid committing a crime, you know there's a problem someplace else. And we want to, the community, Somerset community want to address those problems. Thank you, Rob. Rob knows who I'm talking about. He, you know, we have to have our own place to train our own place in Somerset. I appreciate it, your help and support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one else? No, no? Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name's Elvis Brown. I reside at 3 Da Vinci Court. Is just down the block of, what I'm here speaking about is a recent incident that occurred whereby in our development, which was built, the Gleniero Homes, which was built around 23 years ago, I am one of the original owners that had the house, had a house built. And in fact, I was one of the first who had a certificate of occupancy in terms of residing in, in 2001. In fact, I remember that because I was stuck in London on 9/11 and when I had a business trip in London, and I couldn't come home. So let's get to the point. What I'm here to speak on is, well, we recently had the roads paved in, in our block. The main road, which is Rushigal, takes the entire block in a circle. I think it's like a, maybe a two, three mile circle. I live on a cul-de-sac called Da Vinci Court. Recently, or a couple of years back, the Rushigal itself was in pretty bad shape. Guess what? So was Da Vinci Court. We saw that the township Public Works actually came and filled up or sealed the gaps in the, basically sealed the gaps in, in the roads, but they forgot about Da Vinci Court. Now, recently, we just had a contractor come and pave all of Rushigal. But again, Da Vinci Court was ignored. However, the vendors, the contractors, had their equipment parked. They remember Da Vinci Court, to park there, and they park all of their equipment, back holes, bulldozers, and that stuff that spreads the tar and stuff like that, all in front of my house, blocking my, my mail. I thought that was hypocritical. Guys, I called Public Works just to find out what is going on. Why is this happening? I was given what I thought was a very fleeting answer. Oh, there's a survey done on your road, and your road didn't seem deemed to be in need of repair. Well, with all that heavy equipment on the road, sure as hell did need repair then. I called, again, the Public Works and found out extra documentation concerning, how did they make this determination? Because we were considered not in the budget. And then also, we're given a statement saying that we'll be considered for repaving five to seven years. I would like to bring this to you guys' attention because this is a mess. It's just a sheer mess. I have no idea how did this happen, but I would like to bring it to your attention to not let it happen again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else come forward, our motion to close the public portion meeting.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of closing public portions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public portion is closed. I can answer a bit about Da Vinci Court. The way that we decide how to pave roads is we grade each road from zero to 100. And we take the worst roads, but when it's time to decide when to pave the roads, we start at the bottom and work up until we run out of money. We budgeted $3 million this year, $3 million, $3.5 million, less, $4 million this year, sorry. Finished the budget yet, and I'm already forgetting. $4 million this year, and there are roads we would like to pave that we just don't have the money for. I don't know where on the list Da Vinci Court is. If you tell us, though, that the trucks there damaged the road, I'll ask Mr. Vornlocker to have someone be inspected.
Mr. Mayor, this has been a lengthy back and forth with Mr. Brown and Councilwoman Udine and Mr. Houck, and I have the information if you, but as far as
Oh, you can go ahead.
The temporary repair, the repairs to Mr. Brown's street, Mr. Houck has given him every assurance that those repairs will be made if they're necessary, including the cracked ceiling on his street. Da Vinci's score was a 52 with the latest ratings for the third-party vendor who provides that inspection of all the township roads. The, the street that is being paved had segments ranging between 29 and 36, therefore they qualified. And while it might seem just natural that we would pave the cul-de-sacs off of the main road, the truth is, as you described, the funding for street paving is limited, and we need to make those stretch as far as we can. And those cul-de-sacs get far less traffic, that was also explained, and that the impact on those roads from less traffic means that they will last longer than the road that receives all of the traffic for all of the neighborhood going in and out. And that was the case here. And so that's, that's the answer. And as far as the staging of equipment, the equipment can't stage on the road that's being paved. It has to be staged somewhere. So that's, you know, it was staged on that cul-de-sac, yes. And, and if there's anything that needs to be done to restore that road after the paving is over, it will be done.
Thank you.
And that was explained in emails back and forth with Mr. Brown and Mr. Houck.
Okay, in my mind, the rest of these issues are best handled by Mr. Vornlocker. Did any other council have a comment? Vornlocker, it's you.
Thank you. It's my show, huh? Okay. So roosters. So there has been some back and forth about roosters and whether or not they're classified as livestock poultry, our, poultry, I should say. Our ordinance prohibits livestock in the zone that you live in. What I will do, whether I, whether others agree with my, my opinion or not, is that we have enforced the ordinance, in our zoning ordinance, in the past for that, and I will turn it over to the animal control officer to investigate. The only thing I, you know, you're not supposed to talk now, but I'm going to ask you a question. Is it on Ralph Street?
No.
Phillips Road. Phillips Road. Thank you. I, it's, I, they will find it. I'm sure it will crow for her.
So.
Mm-hmm. Certainly familiar.
One second. So, I know a citizen in East Millstone did investigate the word livestock, and in New Jersey, you are correct, livestock includes poultry.
Poultry.
Now.
Which is the position we've taken for as long as I've worked here, which is longer than I want to mention.
What I suggest, though, is that goes before admin, that we add the word poultry because the average person reading it may make that mistake. But I do, I do agree with you, the law includes poultry.
We, we have enforced it on many occasions, and I will speak with the animal control officer to do the same here. As far as the food truck, again, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, right? I mean, so, in, in all honesty, as a former traffic sergeant in the Franklin Township Police Department, the people who called and complained about those parking violations most often are the ones who got the most action. Call the police department and make a complaint if it's a parking violation, all right? And depending on what type of vehicle it is, it might be a violation whether it's parked on the street or in their driveway. So, then it becomes a zoning violation. So the police department will pass it on to zoning if that's the case. Westminster. So, that portion of Westminster is not a public road, it's not an easement, it is a private road. The only easement that exists is for the residents of Deborah and Julie in that your development has an access easement over their property. As far as any regulations on that road, it would be the responsibility of the association or apartment complex owner, depending on which section you're talking about. If there are trucks parked there that exceed a certain weight limit, and from the photographs that I saw, and I can tell you that this was already provided to me by some, one of you through the mayor's office, I believe last week or the week before, and was turned over to the police department. If there are vehicles that are parked there between midnight and six AM that exceed a certain weight limit, and it looked like some of them would, then it would be a zoning violation, not a police department violation, but a zoning violation. Because it's not a public roadway, it's private property, the zoning department enforces that portion of the ordinance for parking commercial vehicles in excesses of a certain weight. And I'm not gonna get into the weights because it's, it's a whole chart, so. But if they're parked there, you need to notify the police department, but I've also notified the police department to do periodic checks between midnight and six AM, and if those vehicles are seen there, then they would report that to the zoning officer for enforcement. So that's, that's what I can tell you. As far as sidewalks and street lighting, that's a private development, and the fact that they don't have them is, is not anything that we can enforce. No, you can't speak now. This is my turn to answer your questions. And, but the, the answer is that that's completely up to them, it's their property that you drive through to get to your street, and, and it's up to them as to whether or not they want to permit parking. There's nothing about that street that would limit parking. It's the same width as the street in your neighborhood, and parking is permitted on both sides of the street. It's sufficient width to allow parking. So, that's the answer to Westminster.
You missed, you missed noise on Ralph Street.
Missed noise on Ralph Street.
Right, the same people.
About, about the noise meter?
Yes.
So the police department, they left. Well, the answer is, the police department has noise meter operators working on all shifts, not just Monday through Friday. Monday through Friday during the day, the noise meter is operated by the health department. All other times, it's operated by the police department, and they have a number of officers who are trained in its operation. So, it's not a matter of Monday through Friday during the day. It's actually, that's the time that the police department doesn't do enforcement, the health department doesn't. So. Ari drive chain. If the Ari drive chain is not secured, you should contact either my office or the Public Works Department. It's maintained with a lock that, that is both a lock that the fire department has and the township Public Works Department has, because there's two different ways to get through, you know, they can, they each can get through that chain if they need to. But if the chain is not up, then my office or the Public Works Department should be Sidewalk, Schoolhouse, there you are. So, as, as part of the obligation of the, of the development of summer fields, there was a multipurpose path to be installed along Schoolhouse Road from, I believe Rutgers Boulevard to Randolph Road to the shopping center. That's what's being installed now. It is a multipurpose path to serve both pedestrian and bicycle traffic. I believe you've been here in the past when I've had conversations about the shared bike lanes and bike lanes on Schoolhouse Road with one of the residents of Canal Walk, Jim. So, anyway, it's been, it's been a fairly common topic here when he comes and asks about the bike lanes.
Oh.
Bike lanes at one, on one, on several sections of Schoolhouse are going to be striped, but there are sections of, of Schoolhouse that don't allow for bike lanes because of the turn lanes that were put in on Schoolhouse at Rutgers and Canal Walk Boulevard that now prohibit because of roadway width, the installation of, of bike lanes. However, there was a discussion about shared arrows, basically shared lanes for bicyclists and motorists. But of course, that requires a speed limit of less than thirty-five, thirty-five or less, and the speed limit is posted at forty, and a speed survey was done, and now that's not allowed because the speed survey showed that it's an appropriate speed limit. So, bicyclists and pedestrians both. As far as our economic development director and the owner of the shopping center, you, do you know who owns that shopping center? It is your developer, all right? And we have met with your developer, and your developer is actively pursuing businesses for his shopping center. And we have had discussions, but to be perfectly honest with you, he's a far better marketer of his properties, many of, he owns many, than we could possibly be. And he is actively pursuing the type of businesses that you are speaking about. Pathway from Canal Walk to Colonial Park. So there was discussion about a pathway to, from Canal Walk to Colonial Park a number of years ago, and there was inquiries made to the Canal Walk Homeowners Association at that time, and there was a lack of interest on having a walkway from Canal Walk to Colonial Park. And subsequent to that, the county had acquired the property to the back entrance, along the backside of Colonial Park, and it's currently under agricultural leases, and there is not sufficient right-of-way for a walkway along Metlers. It only has a thirty-three foot right-of-way, and so there's insufficient roadway width to put a pathway alongside the road. That's the, that's the situation there. Far as speeds, I will certainly refer to the police department. I've spoken to the police department on more than one occasion about complaints about speeding on Metlers Road. Mark Street. Jimmy, you're still here? Okay. Mark Street speeding, I will turn over to the police department, and I will let them know. I don't have, I don't wear a badge and a gun anymore, John. I don't go out and do radar enforcement, so I'll let the police department know it. As far as the community garden in Naaman Williams Park, let's talk about that for a second. So, the community gardens in Naaman Williams Park had gone untended for four years and became completely and totally overgrown and rotted. And so, the Public Works Department could not restore it back without removing all of the materials that created the beds previously, as well as the fence that needed to be replaced, because it had been unused and untended for four years. As such, and because it seemed that there was a lack of interest in it, I had a discussion with the pastor of Community Baptist Church as part of a food insecurity committee that I sit on with a number of other people. And the pastor of Community Baptist Church here on Demont Lane, along with his congregation, have expressed a great deal of interest in assisting with that community garden. So, I've, I did have a discussion with both Tarik Canyon and Carl Hauck about completing the rebuilding of the park, the, the community garden, and what it's, how it should be rebuilt. And so, it's going to be rebuilt with four-foot by eight-foot raised beds that have thirty-six inch between the beds so that it's ADA handicapped accessible, and that they'll be somewhere between two feet and thirty inches high, again, so that all the beds will be accessible to all people regardless of their, their challenges. And we have the materials in stock in the Public Works yard, and we hope to get that project started to complete it next week or the following week. So there, there's your community garden. And I will tell the pastor that you're interested in helping him. Okay, great.
Mr. Tibbs, sorry, you can't. Mr. Tibbs, I'm sorry, you can't speak now. Thank you.
I think that was everything, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Embarrasson had something to say.
Yeah, I just want to respond to Johnny's request for training funds.
Yeah, you go right.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so Johnny, I don't know that you were here. We approved three hundred thousand dollar funding to Franklin Board of Education for training at-risk youth over the next, course of next twelve months. Well, you know, so there's.
Actually eighteen months.
Eighteen, I'm sorry, eighteen months, yes. Three semesters, yeah, three, three.
Summer, summer session, too.
Yes, correct. So, I think if you have a group of youth that you want to put them through construction trades, workforce training to be, to get them ready for work, I suggest that you speak to Dr. Valli, and he, the school is running the program at the, not the Penn, is it Penn School?
No, Middle School.
Middle School, Franklin Middle School, yes.
Sorry, Mr. Tibbs.
Talk to me later. So we will, we will connect, and they are trying to recruit kids, so we need to get them in front of them. So, every time we try to run these programs, we don't get kids, so it's a, it's a catch twenty-two, so let's.
Mr. Tibbs, I'm sorry.
We, we'll talk separately.
Uh, anyway, other council of comments?
Mayor, I just wanted to mention some of the managers before I forget. Not that it's the biggest issue, but maybe we could have put a blurb in our next newspaper about, we love roosters and chickens, but, because, no, no, I'm sarcastic, we.
I like it.
But that, because it pops up here and there, and understandably, people don't know, and, you know, whatever, you can make it humorous or just a piece of the ordinance, but maybe we could just pop it in the next Franklin Times.
I, I'm fully behind that.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to mention, before I forgot, because it was relevant to a question that was asked. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to council comments and reports. We'll start with Councilman Oni Jaka.
Wait a minute.
And things change.
I've changed.
You had a presentation, you couldn't do it, I'm sorry. Councilman Oni Jaka.
Okay, Mayor. I'm just very familiar with the parking problem we have in Westminster. I've said, our problem has been there for, almost since two thousand and twenty-two. Actually, before that area, Hampton, moved to, moved to Ward One. Actually, the parking on that road constitutes a lot of problems. I would say a menace in that road. But the unfortunate part of it is, land development marked that area as a parking spot without giving the actual specification or standard that would determine the cars or trucks that will be there. So actually, they constitute a very big problem. Very unfortunate for the, for Hampton. So I'm happy that we have really touched it, really need to do something about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Embarrasson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So last couple of weeks, there were a few events that took place, that we participated. Chamber of Commerce had their annual gala on the seventeenth, well-attended event, large event, at Murray Gold. There was a planning board meeting that I participated. I think most of you were there. Owner of the warehouse application was heard, and the coverage was provided by the newspapers. Nothing more to add there. There was a YMCA event that I attended. They, they all expressed a continued interest in fundraising to have the Y in Franklin, so that's a project that we'll all be undertaking very, very shortly. Upcoming events, job, Assemblyman Joe Danielson is going to have a job fair at the Imperial on the twenty-fourth, ten, ten P, ten AM it opens up, I think through two PM. So if you have, if anybody looking for work, please go there. Franklin Food Bank is doing the annual Tour de Franklin event this Sunday on the twenty-eighth. It's going to be a grand success. I think their goal is to get two hundred thousand in fun, funds, and I think they have raised about ninety-three thousand dollars. So if you are willing to support them, please do. They, they do tremendous job of fighting hunger in town, and they need your support. Just so you know, I'm a sponsor. Yeah, the, Monday, the twenty-ninth, seven PM, we are going to have a Zoom meeting to discuss our retail sign, signage information and, and getting some feedback from the business community. So if you are running a business, you have a chance to give support to your business as well as the others that might require some improvements in our ordinance, which I understand is quite dated. Last, but not the least, on the ninth of May, we have a meeting set up with the RVCC and Franklin Board of Education. We want to start looking at college-level courses at the Council at our campus. We are, we are going to continue that conversation. I'm not giving up, bringing RVCC to town. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Embarrasson, Councilman Vasanov.
Mayor, a few things. I'll try to get through them quickly. On the more lighter side, I wanted to acknowledge students of St. Mathias School. I'll just read this blurb. Three St. Mathias School students are among thirty-five finalists in the Partnership for Drug-Free New Jersey Fourth Grade Folder Contest. Three of the thirty-five finalists were picked from a pool of thousands of students. So thirty-five out of thousands, figure maybe one or two in the whole county, there'd be, there was three from St. Mathias. And those finalists, I don't know if I'm pronouncing their name right, Aiden Bill, Emmanuel Victor, and Lorraine Colomo. And contest recognizes students' creative talent and commitment to promoting healthy, drug-free lifestyles. Students from across the state have artistically brought the life, to life the theme, fun things to do instead of drugs, underlining the importance of positive life changes. The artwork of the two grand prize winners will be distributed, featured in folders distributed nationwide, but that's a, that's a pretty amazing group of students, I'm sure. Congratulations, everybody. St. Mathias, for those who don't know, is one of the, I think, longest-running and largest propereal schools in Franklin Township, which I can say all, but pretty much, most all of the students are Franklin students, just, you know, in appropriate as far as public, but congra-, school here in Franklin. Congratulations to them. Congratulations to our group here that's still here, that stick it out through a lot of meetings. Linda Vernadette, and my God, I apologize, Carol, not gonna repeat what, Ed covered it pretty well, but Banger was a little skeptical, but I also know he was a hundred, hundred percent supportive and always said, we gotta do what we can. And I don't think skeptical of the effort, but, you know, we were up with David versus Goliath, so. It's a classic David versus Goliath, and I'm glad that Franklin slash David won. Well, a lot more. Um, well, a lot more people beyond Franklin, but us especially. Real quickly, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but earlier in this month, attended the opening day of, God, I don't know if it's a seventy-second, well, Township, Franklin Township Baseball, also known sometimes as Franklin Township Little League, had their opening season. And just one little tidbit of history here, I, um, I'm going to read a blurb from fifty years ago this month. We had a local newspaper called The Somerset Spectator, anyway. Kind of did on paper a lot of what our two online papers do here online, and one prints monthly. Five girls among approximately three hundred Franklin youths practicing for the upcoming Little League season, according to Tom Brendafo of the local organization. Assignments were given for major, minor, and Saturday morning divisions will be made in the next few weeks for the girls, as well as the boys who signed up this year. The season gets underway May, May fifth. It was fifty years ago this month, or, yeah, April, that Franklin Township Little League first had girls playing, and there was, they don't have their names here, congratulations to those few, that, five, that were the first. Well, now, not do, not only do we have, I believe, a few dozen, we actually have a league of, I think it's a few teams of baseball, softball, that is all female. So our, our, our country's come a long way, and our town, along with it, fifty years ago. Anyway, back to some township business, tonight, we had a Public Works meeting. We have a very large and complex water system, so we're just delving into some technical issues and concerns we're trying to get out in front of, and we spent quite a bit of time with our manager and water director, water department director tonight reviewing that, and we'll update the council, rest of council and public in upcoming meetings. There was also, um, apologize, oh, the Eastern Avenue meeting, that's right, it's not a regular committee meeting. The Eastern Avenue Corridor Study, the one million dollar study, we had a two-hour, pretty intensive session, I believe our manager was on there along with some, I'm not sure who else, and Councilman Dean was there for a bit. It was a pretty intense meeting. Long story short, they are doing what they're supposed to do, but it's going to take a long time. There was over eighty people, I think most of them were Franklin residents, just participants besides the study team and others kind of on the peripheral, like myself, with the study team. So they're planning a meeting, I believe in the fall, where it will be a large public meeting to really get into the nitty-gritty of the data and possible solution, engineering solutions going forward in the fall. Separate, but very related, the manager and I are finalizing what hopefully will be in a few weeks from now, a public, somewhat of a town hall meeting that will deal with some of, hopefully, some issues that we could do between the township and the county to make it, let's just say, safer and more attractive in the short term. So that will hopefully be announced very soon. It's a matter of trying to line up the, the many people who would be hopefully contributing, positive contributors to that meeting. But it is moving along, the bigger study, and I think that is, that is it for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dean.
Thank you, good evening. Um, so a lot of updates have been already provided by my peers. I was also part of the Eastern Ave meeting. Is it easternave.com where people can go and?
It's on our website. While you're, while you're talking, I'll look it up, so I'll give it in my report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
All right, so, so if anyone missed it, you can go and the PowerPoint, everything is still there, so you can read it on your own leisure. We also had the Public Works meeting, and you'll notice there's ordinance here around water, which Councilman Bassinella has provided updates on. So I think with that, I just want to say happy spring, happy holy, happy Boisaki, Vaisaki, Earth Day, and Passover. So it's been springtime, so it's all those holidays, so wishing everyone very blessed and joyous. Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilman Wright, you have nothing to say, so we'll.
I love you. Um, this laptop was supposed to be internet-capable. I got here and it wasn't. And the reason why I'm mad at my computer is because I went and saw Mildred Robinson. She's a hundred and five years old, and her sister's ninety-five years old, and they don't drive as well as they used to in the dark. So forgive them for not coming in, I went to them. So I went to the house and we had food, all the family showed up for this proclamation. And I had this little puppy on tape, and I was going to play it for you. Damn thing don't take internet. Uh, but it was beautiful, the celebration was good. Um, and when we have the next meeting, I'll have this internet so I can show it to you. But I think you'll like it. Her sister, who's ninety-five, says, well, just wait, in five years, I get to do mine, right? And I says, no, you're not a hundred and five years old in five years, so you got to do better than that. Whereas Mildred said, well, when I turn a hundred and ten, I hope we do the same thing. And I said, okay. You know, I, naturally said, okay, and I just let it go. Um, but yeah, it was a lot of fun, and I think you'll, you'll get a, a rise out of that. Second, Juneteenth, even though the actual day is on Wednesday, the nineteenth of June, we will be having our celebration on the fifteenth of June. We will have a parade up Highland, then on to Hamilton Street on our way to Neiman Williams Park, where once again, food, fun, activities for the whole family. We want everyone to come out, because it's not just our Juneteenth, it's everybody's Juneteenth. Not because it's a holiday or anything like that, come out for the fun, it's a community thing. So come on out there and enjoy the community celebration with us. That's about it. Oh, one other thing, Mr. Mr. Vornlocker.
Yes, sir.
When he brought up the community garden, which, like I said, hasn't been used, and every time I talk to somebody, nobody wants to actually go out. The residents didn't want to go and actually do something. They did the first couple of years, but after that, just didn't want to do it. So I'm glad that we have someone that, that wants to come by and up, do a little upkeep, and I'm more unsure as the upkeep goes in, goes up, everyone else will come, come involved with that, that park situation.
That's what I hope.
Um, so we're going to give it a, a go, and I, I might, you know, test out my little green thumb over there and see what happens. I do have a garden in the back of my house, I used to compost, and I dug a hole and spread it out, and I got a little garden going back there. But it too has weeds, so if you want to come by, you can take care of that for me. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I think we're done.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Potaznick.
I just want to wish everyone a happy Passover, may your worries melt away. That's my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I too want to wish everyone a happy Passover. Today, Mr. Vornlocker and I were on a, what do you call it, Teams meeting, a Zoom meeting, essentially, essentially, about the intersections of Jake's, Middle Bush, South Middle Bush Road, and Quarterloo. This is a project that was started, I believe, by Councilman Chase, which I picked up, and I've been aided by Councilman, or Deputy Mayor Potaznick and Councilman Oni Jaka, because that's the exact border of the Third and First Ward. But it's basically to have a turning lane on South Middle Bush to, because it backs up when someone wants to take a left onto Quarterloo or a left onto Jake's Lane, it backs up. They're not only planning to do that, they also want to put left and right turning lanes off of Quarterloo and Jake's Lane to facilitate safety and traffic there. I was very pleased to see that the state finally has it, clearly understands the issue that we want, there was times that it just seemed very confusing. They came up with a plan of what to do. I'm not thrilled about their timeline, but we're making some progress on it. It's, one of my goals in life is to get that done. And, Mr. Chase here, I think you're the one who thought of it, so kudos to you. And, okay, thank you for the, that credit. September twenty-ninth meeting, which was mentioned by Councilman Embarrasson, it's mainly, the goal of the meeting is to hear what businesses have to say, it's open to the public, we listen to everybody, but the goal of the meeting is to understand the needs of the people who put up the signs. Eventually, we will have a meeting where we can hear from the public to see what their thoughts are about the signs. And that is all I have. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to concentrate my efforts of, on my report, on one particular item today, and I know that I have talked about this in the past, but I'm going to talk about it again, because it, it is something that is important to me. And I think it should be important to all of us as, as people who live here in Franklin Township and, or, or serve Franklin Township here, and that is the Meadows Foundation. So on our website right now, in the Township News, is Events at the Meadows. There's a very nice recap of upcoming things that the Meadows is hosting. I'm not going to tell you all about everything that they're hosting through the summer, but there's things like Backyard Birds, which is a hands-on field workshop on identifying birds that are local to our area, the Honeybee, which is about, go figure, beekeeping, the Second Sunday Museum Tours at the Wykoff Garrettson House on South Middle Bush Road, and then a new thing, Club Meadows, which is just kind of a get-together with people who share interests in common, specifically, I would guess, related to historic things here in our town, and just have a nice chat. And, but what I really want to talk about is the financial considerations for the Meadows If you don't know, everything that the Meadows Foundation does is based on donations and memberships and patrons. And they have fallen on some hard times recently, and this has been a topic of conversation here at this council, at a council meeting recently, so it is not some deep, dark secret that they are hurting for funds. To be a member as an adult of the Meadows Foundation for the year costs fifteen dollars, fifteen, not fifty, not five hundred, fifteen. If you're a senior, it's even less, ten. If, if you're a full-blown family, it's twenty. Okay, we're not talking about a great deal of money. You know, and, and I would say that anyone who has any interest in the history of this town and the historic structures of this town, take a shot and become a member. You might just like it. If you really like it, you might become a volunteer who actually works for some of these events that will, again, raise even more money. The Meadows Foundation is the caretaker for homes that we own, that the Township of Franklin owns. If you live here, you own them, okay? These are homes that are historic and, and, and important to the town and its history. They cost a lot of money to maintain. Um, there's currently, three of the houses have caretakers. They get paid in, to a, to a small degree, and they also pay rent, so there's a, a give and take there. But, but the township also spends a significant amount of money on maintenance for the more costly repairs and maintenance that needs to be done. But it's a very worthwhile organization, it's been around for nearly fifty years, nineteen seventy-seven, I believe, coming up on their fiftieth anniversary in a couple of years. Give it some thought, and, you know, and I am going to, I am going to live by my words and do the same, and make a donation, become a patron, become a member, do something good that, that'll make you feel good to help save the important homes in our town, and that's my.
Thank you. And my wife and I recently became members, and we.
You did, your name is on their website.
And we went to a recent lecture about Einstein, and we plan to do more, it's really worthwhile, it's a great thing to contribute to. Okay, um, we are on to item number ten, the agendas are up there if you want them. Council discussion item, we have none. Approval of the minutes, there were none submitted, we're moving right along. To pay the bills, the warrants, in the amount of seven million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents on April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, are presented to the Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion on the warrants?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, anyone would like to pull an item? Adam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilman Francois. Councilwoman Karazi. Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potaznick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uden.
Yes.
Councilman Bassinella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Public hearing and adoption of ordinances on second reading. We have a first reading to introduce an ordinance and let people know that we will be considering it later on, and then we have a second reading where we vote on the ordinance, and we also have the portion of time for the public to make comments. Ordinance forty-three, four, thirty-five dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending the Code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter one twelve, land development, amending the variance submission checklist, site plan submission checklist, subdivision checklist, subsumi-, subdivision submission checklist, and the general application submission checklist. It's presented for the public hearing, final adopted object, the public has been noticed as required, do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both say nay, we're open to the public on this item. Same rules as before.
Debbie Stewart to Farrington, can you just tell us a little bit about what this is? I missed prior meetings. I'm, I'm assuming it's just updating forms, but I don't know.
It is, it's kind of updating forms so that it corresponds with what's going to be on the web, so that people can do these things over the web. Is that pretty much right, Mr.?
That's exactly right.
Seeing no one else jumping at the bit to get to the microphone, a move we close public comment on the.
I'd also like to have the minutes reflect that I got that right. One in a row. Very good. Um, do we have a motion to close? Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of closing public portions, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay, motion is carried, do we have a motion to adopt?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? Adam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilman Karazi. Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potaznick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uden.
Yes.
Councilman Bassinella.
Yes.
And Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance on first reading, forty-four, thirty-nine, dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending the municipal code of Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter three eighty-four, water sections, three eighty-four dash twelve, quarterly consumption charges, and three eighty-four dash eighteen, fire service charges, and three eighty-four dash twenty, meter charges. We're going, ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting and publication in accordance with law and public hearing, and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Council to be held on May fourteenth at seven PM, right here in the council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved. Seconded.
Then seconded. So the discussion is, we raised the water rate last year, but the last time we had raised it before that was in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, and I believe we. raised it before that was in 2012 and 2013, and I believe we raised it 10% and 20% last time.
Fifteen.
Fifteen and 20. Last year, we raised it 15, and we said we may be back, and we, unfortunately, we are back. The 15 didn't cover it, we raised it 20. In the 10 years that passed, the amount that we pay for water went up 19%. That's just the water part, not the, not the maintenance, the operations, the pay, et cetera. So, we feel now it's, again, we need to go up to 20%, which to the median rate payer is $69. So, why do I use median instead of average? Averages work nice when you have a bell curve of things you're trying to summate, but most people pay at the low end of water, so there's a big spike, and then at the high end of water, it dribbles out. So, median is a better way to measure it. So, the median will be $69 a year increase. There will also be a $16 a year, so $4 a quarter, new fee for meters. The problem we're having is people pay for meters, or when a meter has to be changed, we ask them to pay it, and it's a big sum all at once. The meter lasts about 20 years, $16 is $320 total, so you'll pay it slowly at $4 a quarter. So, unfortunately, we're increasing water rates. We had talked about having water rates go up automatically as we get, as we get more of a charge. So, that 19% happened over 10 years, and now we're doing a sudden jump. We feel it would be easier if that came slowly. As we get an increase, you get the increase. We're not ready to do that yet, but that may come later on this year. That's where we are. Does anyone else have comments? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois? Councilwoman Karazi? Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potasnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Uden?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
It passes. So, okay. Consent agenda. Items A through Q is the, let's listen on the consent agenda portion of this meeting. Presented to Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Does anyone want to pitch, pull anything?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, 24-160 Resolution, that's H, which is, vote that separately. Well, I had a couple of questions. I don't know if we need to vote separately.
Go ahead, ask your questions.
I was a little surprised when I saw this. Could, Manager, if you can just give me, give us a quick recap, and hopefully, good news that this will get out there real quick.
It's already ready to go back out again. So, the problem was, is that when the bid package went out to the prospective bidders, it did not include all of the federal paperwork required for an American Rescue Plan funded project, and so, the bid had to be canceled and rebid. So, it's, it's ready to, it might be going back out already, might actually be already advertised with the appropriate paperwork to go back out. It was an oversight on the part of the township to not include the ARP fund forms that are required by the federal government, so back out to bid in a little while.
Okay. But, it's moving fast, it shouldn't-
Yeah, oh, no. Like I said, if I look on the website, it might already be advertised.
Okay, and I guess when, if we do more, we know exactly what to include, because hopefully, we'll be investing some more.
Just so there's an oversight, then the paperwork, then it could get included in the bid package.
Things happen, okay. I'm glad that it's ready to go back out. I didn't have a chance to ask you earlier, I know we were-
Everything else is the same.
A lot of other things. And I just had, I'm going to try to keep it really simple, it's just this contract for the water, American water.
Item F, 24-158.
Yes, and again, I don't necessarily think we need to vote it separately. I'm trying to keep it minimal, but if, I could just ask the attorney a couple of quick, very quick questions here. I just, I know it's for 25 years, with automatic renewal of 15. I read in it, and I just got it today, so I, you know, didn't read the whole thing, but if, it says that the, either party wants to not renew at the 25 years, they have to give a three-year notice prior to not renewing?
Correct.
Is that good, bad? Is that the standard? Is there no reason we could do with any less time, just thinking forward? I know most of us might not be here in 20-some years, but-
So, water is a unique resource. When you analyze this contract, you analyze it in that way. We were talking about electricity. There are lots of providers who provide electricity. There's a national grid. We go out to bid, we get 10 bids for people who want to supply us power. We pick from, we could, every year, we get the best. Water is water. Water infrastructure comes from a couple of different parts. If this wasn't our supplier, there may not be another supplier. In some respects, this is a contract that, what we're doing is locking in a long-term commitment, because part, part of what happens, the, the part of the magic around here that people see is, go in and you want, you build a single-family house, and you want to hook up to our water system. You need to get a permit. That permit is based on a permit that we have, our water system has with the state. If we can't satisfy the state of New Jersey that we have a dependable water supply that supplies our system, the state of New Jersey says you can't have people hook up to your water system anymore. So, we enter into these long-term contracts because what we're trying to do now is establish stability. As I said, this isn't one of those things where we're thinking, well, you know, two or three years from now, we're going to go out into the market and see whether or not we can get a cheaper rate for water, because there are in other places we can go and get one. You know, there are other water systems around us, we know that, right? We, this is, there's this water system, there's New Brunswick, a couple of others, but, but they, they operate under the same rules that we do, meaning that they might not have the capacity to supply us. So, what we want to do is lock in this capacity for as long as we possibly can, because it gives us the ability to manage growth and have a valid water supply. The overlay to all of this, Councilman, and not to be overly complicated, is that the state of New Jersey has gotten, I don't want to say stricter, but they have changed their philosophy in how they manage their water supply, how they calculate the numbers. So, suddenly, two or three years ago, water systems all across the state of New Jersey got letters from the state DEP that says, you no longer have water capacity for, A, for the system that you have, or for any, any additions to your system. That has forced all of us, even those that didn't have expiring contracts, to go in and reevaluate their contracts, and it's all about locking in a supply. So, three years is not, is not odd. In fact, it might be a little short, because if we got three years' notice that we, that they weren't going to supply us water, it might take us a damn sight longer than three years to try to- So, you know, that's one of those things where we, we tried to build in those protections to the town, because it's such a critical infrastructure that we have to make sure that it-
You know, and thank you, and that's why I said, I don't know if it was too short, too long.
It's probably-
Not to rehash what you said, but-
It's industry spared.
Yeah, water is, you know, we kind of own and run it as a council, but we have, we're relying on these suppliers. So, I don't want to get further into it. Thank you for shedding some light on that. It is a 25-year contract, and water is a big issue right now, and most people don't think of it, but we've got a lot of things going on and a big system. So, the only other question I had, I didn't get to read all of it, but one that stuck out in my mind, or that I was curious, how, I know we have limited options, and I'm not going to get into any, but say for some reason we were to get, start getting much more water from another company, or there's any other, any other things that happen in 25 years, we build a water tower, whatever. Are we obligated, at minimums, that if we backed off, had a little more control over, or options over our volume, this is with the largest supplier of our township, I understand, largest supplier by far? So, are we kind of locked in, if we do come up with ways that we lessen our reliance on American water?
Well, the answer is, we are locked in, and so is American water. So, American water has to have infrastructure to supply us this amount of water. In order to have, to maintain that infrastructure, they need to have guaranteed contracts, essentially, from places like Franklin Township and surrounding, a lot of surrounding municipalities. So, no, it's not in our best interest, because there, there is not ever a concern that five years from now, we'll have more water than we know what the answer is. That's just, that's the opposite of what-
No, but just saying, if our volume needed reduced at all, I know we have minimal options, believe me, I just wanted to know how locked in. I understand there's a benefit to being locked in, but at the same time, I just, from what I've been hearing and reading, there's hopefully going to be some, maybe either legislative or innovative changes, or hopefully, make it a little easier for towns to manage their water systems.
I'm a fan of the New Jersey Legislature. They cannot create water. Right. They, they can't.
All right.
And, you know, if you said to me, it's interesting, because I've been reading about this recently, and I'm not really sure why, if you said to me, well, you know, Lou, in 15 years, the Six Mile One reservoir was going to get built, and it's going to be another source of water, then I would tell you that we would be negotiating a shorter-term contract, because we would know that. But, there's a reason why the state of New Jersey plans reservoirs, things like 75 years in advance, because they are trying to stay 75 years ahead of the water demand. The demand for water is not, it's, you know, we're going to get more efficient, but it's not going to get less, and one of the things that we did, and Bob will tell you, we negotiated this contract for the better part of almost two years.
That's what I've been taught.
Is because we want to, wanted to get, we want, we wanted, and not really me, we wanted Carl Hauck, and those who run our system, to be comfortable that this number was a number that they could live with for 25 years, and, and that, and that was a concern. And, you know, we manage our various water supply contracts. Remember that, you know, we do that so that we take or pay contract, we make sure we're always taking, and it's those things, but really, once again, this is a, it's literally a closed system. There's not much on the horizon as to, I guess, the New Jersey Water Supply Authority, right, is, kind of regulates the, the systems around here, but, yeah, there's nothing about this that would change, change our mind, because the big concern would be, okay, we'll take less of a minimum, and then, you know, and then someday, we'll go to the water company and say, look, we really need more water, and they'll say, look, everybody's locked in, all of our allocations are taken up, you don't, you no longer have a seat at the table. That is, that's a disastrous consequence.
No, I understand, and I appreciate you explaining it in, I think, terms we can all understand and appreciate. It's kind of a little bit of a catch-22, because I know there's not much, and I wasn't suggesting to anybody that we're going to do that reservoir in Franklin, but I get your point.
Right.
And I was thinking just more, something hypothetical, and we could end it here, is, you know, they do this big thing East and Avenue, and eight years from now, they're literally digging up one side and expanding, and we decide to run a water main further down from another company, and this is all hypothetical, that we would expand, or, and then we would just need less, that we are kind of locked in, but what you're saying is, is just, it's, there's more benefits, especially with there being little to no options in the foreseeable future.
Right. And, you know, and once again, knowing a little bit about the water infrastructure in this area, there are only a handful of, there used to be more, but there are only now a handful of companies that, that, companies and municipalities that control water supplies. And, you know, the problem is, is that there's only, this is not a question of whether or not there's other companies, it's, it's where they withdraw the water from. I mean, you either have to get water from a body of water, or get it from a well. It's one of those two things, and, you know, unfortunately, we know all the bodies of water, we know where everybody's drawing water from, they're all kind of spoken for. The only one, the only one that's not, and just, just to be complete, is I believe that they built a Round Valley Reservoir, and I don't believe that anybody actually takes water from it. Yeah, no, actually, the Round Valley Reservoir is used to bring the water levels of the Raritan River up when the waters run low to- Correct. ...supply the draw of, from the Raritan River by New Jersey American Water. There you go. So, that, that's the answer to your question.
No, and I appreciate it, and I know it's been a long contract, and I'm only asking these questions tonight, because quite frankly, I wish I knew about it sooner. From what I understand, we did do a good job negotiating it.
It scares me, because I-
You and staff, I just, what's that?
...had a 25-year contract, and I negotiated it twice, so that frightens me.
You negotiated the last one?
Nineteen, so this contract ran from 1992 to 2022. Right. But, you negotiated a New Brunswick water- Right. -contract, and you also negotiated, obviously, the extension of this water contract to get us from '22 to '24. It was just last year. Just last year.
And we don't have Farrington-
It doesn't feel as long.
And we don't have the Farrington Lake in our town, and I think they do most of the New Brunswick supply, but we are, we have what we have, and we're doing what I guess the limited options allow us, but I appreciate you giving us a little more insight today. Again, I, I just got it, otherwise I would have had, looked, you know, spoke to you prior. Okay, Mayor, I'm satisfied, I appreciate the time, explained those two resolutions, and I'm not asking for it to be separated out.
Okay. Anyone else? Would just like to comment, you can make water.
And, thank you.
Yeah, it's just-
You just can't make it into wine.
Of course, a lot. Can't make it into wine.
Okay. I always get those two things confused.
I can't. Um, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois? Councilman Karazi? Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potasnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Uden?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Goods, committee, commission vacancies, any nominations? During that, I'll just list the committees that have openings on, the Clean Communities Committee, Advisory Board of Health, Advisory Recreation Council, Cultural Arts Council, Hamilton Street Advisory Board, and Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. There's Allen Shatree. We don't, we don't appoint Shatree, that's why it's not listed here, the manager, but yes, there is Shatree openings available, and we have no executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Be well, Franklin.